All right, call this meeting to a order. Uh, can we have the roll call please?
Uh, Mayor Self.
Here.
Um, Counselor Myrtle?
Here.
Eugene?
Here.
Brenda?
Here.
Floyd?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
All present. The Brother Mayor, I mean Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. We have a forum. All right, uh, if you would, if you have your cell phone, either mute it or turn it off please until after the meeting. All right, uh, Mertel, thank you for coming. Glad to see you here once again. And I want to take this opportunity to wish each and every one of you Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Uh, and too, I'd like to say for those present from the Green Acres area, we do, my wife and I certainly appreciated the flowers. They were beautiful that you sent from Motherland. So, we thank you very much for that.
Ms. Myrtle took care of that, Mr. Mayor?
It does her. Your daughter does an outstanding job. Beautiful, beautiful flowers. And I have pictures of them if anybody would like to see. All right, uh, due to, I'm very hectic, couple of weeks, we're not going to have any minutes to, uh, to review tonight, uh, for have those, the next meeting. Would you have, um...
I do have financial.
Financial. Do you have copies for us or just, uh...
No, I'm just gonna read them and let you look at them. I didn't have time to make copies. Okay, in the, um, general fund, the balance in the general fund is three thousand, three hundred and six dollars and twenty-eight cents. And that agrees with the bank, if you want to look at the bank statements.
That was thirty-three oh six?
Mm-hmm, thirty-three oh six.
Okay.
Twenty-eight. In the, um, uh, capital improvements account is two thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Okay.
In the, uh, two and seven account, it's a seven thousand, fifteen dollars and seventeen cents, the road account. Here comes somebody.
All right.
Can they get in?
Um, the, um, four, five, and six road account is eight thousand, thirty-six dollars and ninety-three cents. And here they all are if anybody wants to look or check anything. They're all right here.
Uh, we didn't have any, uh, unusual expenses as fixed lines as routine bills so far. Uh, there's come in months, we will have the annual insurance premium that we have to pay, uh, twenty-five fifteen or twenty-five...
Twenty-five fifteen, something like that. We'll have to pay.
It had to be, uh, okay. Any questions or comments about the balance at this point?
Y'all want me to pass the start piece and y'all look at it? I'll do that. You want to look at it?
I'm good.
Yeah, we'll get the printout for the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll put it there with the minutes next time.
I do have a motion to accept as read financial.
Make a motion that there's...
A second?
All the things are high?
High.
You know us? All right, uh, reports to standing committees. Do we have none?
Um, I did call Roger. I don't know if this is a stand, it's not a standing committee, but I did call Roger about the, the line. And, um, Brenda said he got back with her and it's a steel one.
You mean Jason?
I meant Jason.
Yeah, you said Roger, not one where it's Roger. Jason, okay.
But it's a steel one inside there and he doesn't have the equipment to cut it. So, he's trying to find somebody that can.
And I'm gonna call, I'm going to call and see if I can't get Charter to come out here because it has to be an old Charter cable. They used to have it, but if we can't get somebody out here, I don't know.
Whoever the previous cable company was...
Should do it.
Is their part of their property and Charter should be responsible for it. And if we ever do get it taken down, we send them to do it.
Yeah, but if we have to pay somebody, should it? Well, if the, Jason did say that he would try, but his, his electrical thing only goes up to like, what'd I say, six hundred?
Six.
Six hundred volts or something and he didn't really know what was in there with the steel and he couldn't cut it anyway. So, Alabama Power's not gonna do it because they came and stepped it and they're not gonna take, do it. So, we gotta find somebody to do it. I did see a, a truck Friday evening when I went up to Roger, there was a truck doing some cable, but I don't know if they were putting up cable or what, but I started to stop and ask them if they'd come down here and cut it. If I find out who it was, I'll...
Do this for me, if you would, contact Charter, uh, to find out if they have a local service hub.
Uh-huh.
And give us a point of contact or a phone number.
Or somebody.
And I'll call.
Okay. I will. Is that special committees?
Well, that was just, uh...
Yeah, I'll put it under...
Standing committee.
I've come with a monitor. I jumped ahead. It's fun.
But we did talk to Jason, I talked to him and so did Brenda.
Okay. He was the only one that, uh, came to mind when I stopped my head.
That could do it.
Mm-hmm. And if he can't, then let's, uh, go back to Charter.
Somebody.
Okay, uh, there's no reports from special committees, uh, reports of officers. Well, I don't have anything to do to say about roads once again. I did meet with, uh, Judge Green on a separate matter, and it was a couple of weeks ago. And I am going to be meeting with him again in the next few days, as soon as I can work it out with him, so we can meet, find a mutual time to meet, to, uh, he wants to meet at the courthouse because of available services or, uh, he really wanted to show me something. And so, I'm just having to find the time that I can get up to Indiana to do it. So, that's where we stand at this moment. And I also talked to Commissioner Strickland because he's been, you know, pushing to get me to sign a contract with him. And I finally, I finally told him that I'm not gonna sign a contract until we determine who is responsible for the roads. Because if I was to sign a contract with him, I'm taking responsibility and I can't do that. Not until they prove to me that it is our responsibility and not theirs.
If you sign the contract with them, they're not gonna take care of the roads because they won't even fix what they tore up at Beryl Smith's house where they put the cover in. It's sticking straight up.
So, uh...
They got the city paid them to do it. And he said it's on private property now. Well, they're the one that put it on private property.
You talk about their...
Yeah. Okay, there's, well, until we resolve that...
And another thing is that as far as the roads go, if we, if we have to do the roads, all we can do is pay, is, uh, patch. And patching lasts at the most six months. And then, we're not gonna have the money to patch them again. So, what are we gonna do then?
Well, you know, one of the things Judge Green has, uh, at least offered to help with is to try to get some grants. Um, but as I told him and the commissioner, until we determine whose it is, whose roads they are, then, uh, I'd like to see us pursue some grants jointly, uh, until we can determine who's, who owns the roads, who's responsible...
Did you, um, did you look over that material I sent you that your sister sent me from the Lake of Minas Powell?
Yeah, I've been looking at that for quite a while. Yeah, that's, that's an option, but again, until we determine one way or the other, even DNX and, uh, if they come back and say that was the county's responsibility before the property was DN X, then just like, uh, if it's the county's responsibility, you know, we would be held for, accountable for it.
Well, as far as I know, the people on Cobb Brazil Roads, when we signed that thing to give the right of way for the road to come through there, I mean, our property was DN X'd at that time, wasn't it?
No, uh, you gave, uh...
Right away.
The right of way, you just, but I think, that's another thing that has to be discussed and determined. When that, uh, right of way was given, it was given to Blount County.
Has Blount County done, he can work it all along Cobb Brazil, on their part ever?
Yes, now, they, they patched most of Cobb Brazil. They missed a couple of holes.
Well, some of what they patched is already coming up.
Yeah, it's already coming up.
What they put down is already coming down.
Some of it is, yeah.
But, um, now, there, there's a lot of Dean's Ferry from, uh, where we get on from Cobb Brazil, up past Malcolm's that they didn't do anything to.
Yeah, the, they fixed one spot that's pretty bad and they met the worst one on, on Dean's Ferry, but that didn't touch it at all.
And...
Of course, I understand the reason they didn't was, as I understand it, is because it's considered in the town and county line and they're not gonna do the town and county line stuff until these things have been determined. Uh, I'm okay with that.
I know it's taken a lot longer than any of us wanted it to, but until we can settle this one way or the other, you know...
I said, Malcolm had, you know, he had told him what we needed and he just, Mr. Strickland, and he just seems to wanna ignore it because, you know, he was asked twice to give us proof that they're not responsible and he hasn't done, he hasn't done it.
I don't know.
Well, honestly, I don't mean to speak out of turn here, but honestly, it's, it's typical kind of government. And what they're going to say to you is that it's not their responsibility to prove that they are responsible for it, it's yours to respond, prove that they are.
Right.
And they're gonna operate off of the, off the presumption that they're not until you prove to them differently.
And was, uh, Brenda?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the affidavits, do you know who, or we stand alone?
I have some. Malcolm, didn't you give them to Malcolm, the blank ones, Sue? Yes.
I was gossiping, I'm sorry.
Well, you gotta pay attention.
I gave everything to Malcolm that I was supposed to.
Yeah.
I was posted.
And I've got, I've got a few of the ones that signed them up here, but I don't have all of them.
He didn't go that day. Something happened.
Nobody went that day. And I called up there because, what was I, in the hospital or I was sick?
Now, this was the day that I buried...
It had the, yeah, that's right. Your mother's funeral was that day.
Yeah, and I was supposed to go and I was at the hospital with my brother.
Right. And Brenda called me and wanted to know if I was gonna go and I think, and I told you about Buddy, and I had fallen in the shower.
Yes.
It is.
We didn't know, but I did call up there to the commission office and tell them that we were on the agenda for the work session and we, there would be nobody there.
Well, I really need to, as many of those affidavits as possible. I need to get copies of them anyway.
Okay, well, I'll...
And, uh, anybody else on Cobb Brazil Road...
Well, I'll sign one tonight.
That can sign one of these affidavits saying it, you know, the best of their knowledge, Blount County's been maintaining these roads or has done all the work.
You bring, Brenda, you bring one by the house and Mama can sign it.
Okay.
And, uh...
I can't do that because we didn't live up here all the time and she can't.
Well, see, there's a lot of us that we, we were here, but we couldn't sign them because we were here.
You were here in sixty-eight, Kirk.
No, we didn't move up here in seventy.
Well, that road was charred, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Well, then you were here when the, oh, okay, you don't remember.
No, they didn't pave it in sixty-eight. That road wasn't paved.
No, they, they actually chartered it in seventy, when with, the year we moved in, they came in.
It was just dark.
Jefferson County chartered part of it and Blount County put a, uh, it wasn't actually chartered, it was white rock, uh, not gravel, rock, but more of like a, I don't know what you'd call it, but like a...
Wasn't a crusher run?
It might have been a crusher run, but it was...
Limestone, but crusher run.
But, um, and then, um, Jefferson County put red rock on, on, on the part that was, actually, it's actually still, is now Blount County, but, but at that time, they thought it was Jefferson County and they did actually, our driveway and, um, about half of Cobb Brazil Road in, in red rock.
Were you not living here when they paved Dean's Ferry though?
We moved here in seventy.
Yeah, well, they paved it before seventy because I was still at home.
They, they had paved Dean's Ferry before we ever moved up here.
Well, anyway, that, that's what I need, is get as many affidavits as possible to take with me when I speak with Judge Green about, uh, Commissioner Strickland.
I said what I could get this week, so you can go, when are you planning on seeing Judge this week?
Uh, well, I want to try to work it out where I can see sometime this week.
Well, you just let me know, but I'll, I'll see, I'll get with Malcolm and see if he has any, because we had given him a lot of the blanks. Sue was taking them for him. He said he would take them around to everybody because he knew everybody that had been here. So, I'll have to see if he can...
Jan can sign one for the Dean's Ferry because she was...
All right, just bring a couple of them by and maybe sign them.
I'll do some tonight. And I will notarize them. If they'll sign them and all that, I'll notarize them and he can take them for the time.
Hey, but once we gather that, if they still, you know, going back to what you, uh, we were talking about a minute ago, uh, if we present these affidavits and they still say, no, no, not our work, not our responsibility, uh, that's when we're probably gonna have to retain legal counsel and address it in the courts. I mean, it's, is that...
Well, you know, Judge Green sat here himself and said that if it was incorporated before nineteen ninety-five, the county was responsible and county line was incorporated in nineteen fifty-seven.
If the county was taking care of the roads prior to ninety-five, then they were responsible for them now. But even though, you know, the town was incorporated nineteen fifty-seven, but if the town was maintaining the road prior to ninety-five, then the town is responsible today. But if the county was maintaining the road prior to ninety-five, then they continue to be responsible for those roads today.
Well, county lines never had any equipment. We, they've never had the money to maintain the roads.
I think what their argument is, is that they have, that the town has paid some to have them done because they had to file a suit against the town to make them pay.
That was an emergency situation.
Oh, is that what it was?
And I closed the road because it had caved in and they wouldn't do anything.
Okay.
And Wyman helped me because it was fixing the cave-in up there, uh, you know, by the church, you know?
Yeah.
And, uh, that was an emergency, an emergency situation.
Is that the where, there on Smith Mill where that pipe has come up now?
Yes.
Okay, but the town had to pay for that, right? For them to do that?
They had to, but it was an emergency situation. We're supposed to have life lines there.
Okay, well...
And we did pay that as one hundred dollars, I think.
The county done the work.
The county did the work for, and they discharged the, for the labor, the material. No, they discharged material.
Just material, okay.
All right. Well, that, that's where we stand on that, but at the moment, we still need to...
But if I bring that up, Buddy, that was life and limb, that was an emergency situation that it, it had to be resolved, which EPA, uh, Max Armstrong, let's shut the road down. So, we had to do something there. That was a must-do right there.
When was that done? Because I remember Carlene was driving the school bus and she had to go all the way around. She couldn't come down Smith Mill.
Well, I advocated the throne in eight.
Two thousand eight, so it was during that...
I'm gonna base something between six and, six and eight.
It was after we moved up, but we moved up here in six, so it had to be around two thousand seven or something.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, any other comments, questions? Okay, um... The subject that I did meet with Judge Green on was the, I talked to Blount County about, uh, if they would be interested to go in with us, uh, requesting Attorney General's opinion on the dump, on what we could do for the dump. Well, it was a, it was a productive meeting with him. Uh, they were interested in, uh, assisting us. And what, what came about was that, uh, he had a point of contact down at the AG's office, who he called when I was there, and, uh, found out that we were asking the wrong questions. They will not issue a Attorney General's opinion on something that has already taken place. But they will issue an opinion on something that is proposed. In other words, uh, they wouldn't issue a, a ruling or an opinion on whether or not it was legal for them to get the host government approval because of the moratorium. That actions that we've been taking, it's been done. They're not going to issue an opinion on that as to whether it's right or wrong, legal or not. That is an issue that would have to be decided and settled in the courts. But what he will, what the AG will do is issue opinions on, uh, possible actions. Does the council have the right and the power or authority to withdraw host government approval to comply with the moratorium? That's the question that we can ask of the AGs. So, that's the question we're gonna ask.
So, we're gonna do that?
Oh, you got it. Okay. There you go.
You got it. She has it.
Anyway, that's the, that was, uh, like I said, a very productive meeting because it saved us a lot of headaches and a lot of time. Because if we'd submitted what we had at the, at that particular time, it would have been cut, it would have been rejected and we wouldn't, probably would not have known why.
Does, excuse me, does this mean, this means what we're go, what are they gonna do, what we're gonna do now?
What we're gonna do is submit the new questions. The, the background, the governor's executive order, the passages of the laws on, in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, establishing the moratorium, uh, the action that the council took in providing the host government approval for the landfill application after all these things had taken place. Uh, the moratorium had been put in place, the legislature passed a law establishing the moratorium legally as part of the code. The council, and mayor and council at that point, uh, provided the host government approval contrary to what the moratorium stated. So, those are our facts. And what we're going to ask is, does this council have the power and authority to withdraw the host government approval from a landfill application?
And if we do, then what?
Then we're going to withdraw the approval.
So, they won't be able to open the dump?
Right.
We will not, they will not have the host government approval and that is a required step for the application.
When is he going to, when is this question gonna be asked of them? Is the lawyer, have you sent back to the lawyer to do that yet?
Not yet, but it, uh, we're gonna do it as quickly as we can. The moratorium is still in effect until the end of May next year.
End of May of next year?
Well, twenty fourteen. The end of May of twenty fourteen, the moratorium is still in effect. We'll see what happens during this legislation, uh, session to find out what changes they make in the law, if any, or whether they extend the moratorium additional time.
How, how, how did they do away with the group that happened down near my grandmother's old place down here?
Oh, you're talking about, uh, what was it, John, Johnny, that, that at, uh...
Connectwood?
I hadn't heard from him, Floyd. I will call him this week. I will call him this week, Johnny Andrews, and see where they are. He told me it was a moot point about two months ago, I think, Buddy, didn't I tell you that?
Yeah.
That they're just tying up loose ends because of the transparency in it, they won't tell who's the bikers. And, uh, so, uh, that's what he told me, but, you know, things change, but I will call him this week.
But there also are some Attorney General opinions that are pending on that question.
I'll get, I didn't, I didn't give you those? Okay, well, I need to call and give...
Is the, is the fellow that's, was backing this up here, is he still backing this thing up here?
You mean, uh, Johnny Andrews?
Nobody's seen him, nobody's heard anything from him and his name has not been mentioned.
You're talking about John Dave?
No, no, the man that's...
Oh, the man about the Chastain.
Yeah, Mr. Chastain.
Well, WCA is being sold for the third time.
The third time?
And, uh, nobody knows who they're being sold to, but they're, what I, my, what I'm hearing is that they're just about belly up. They've let just about everybody go, so...
Oh, okay.
I don't think that business is as lucrative as I think it's gonna be. The building, there's no building going on in Alabama to keep up with a, a debris dump like that, so...
The other thing, Attorney General's up for reelection, so this would be a good feather in his hat.
It would be, and to get rid of landfills unnecessary, evil, but we need to be here, we don't need it.
We have three and twenty miles.
But we don't need another one.
No, we've got, we've got plenty.
Yeah.
That's just asking for, not one, answer all ten more.
There is plenty of capacity within the state here already.
Absolutely.
We don't need anymore.
We're not making...
We have enough capacity now for, what is it, two and a half or three times what we need.
They're trying to put one in the town lot. And that road, the mayor and all of them met with them and what were they gonna get, like fifty cents?
A ton?
They were getting two dollars a ton and the mayor said that wouldn't even be enough to keep the roads up.
That's right.
Have y'all seen, gone on Lehigh Road and seen the excavation going on?
Uh-uh.
Well, Van has cut all the timber and he's supposed to put in a cattle farm that is not a landfill that we're putting in. Because I have heard that.
I heard it was a mine in Lehigh, or landfill.
No, it's already been mined, but he's gonna put, he's, in a cattle farm there and he's gone through and cut the timber and done the land, but that's where, that's where we're supposed to be putting in a landfill.
Oh, you and, you and Van have been running.
I don't know about the railroad, but we're supposed to put the land in.
You haven't got railroad haul up and running yet.
Yeah, that's, uh...
Well, I went by, but you need to have them look at it.
I'm gonna ask this question for, for, for Cia and, uh, she called me the other day, you know, she lives there next to Cindy. She called me and said she heard a blast.
She heard three blasts.
Boom, boom.
And, and, like, it was mining blasts. And it sounded like it was coming from behind her, in the direction behind her. Um, Malcolm tried to tell me that it was, that it was over there in the landfill, that they were trying to cover up debris.
Was it behind us?
And she said that it was behind her. Her, one of her little dogs wouldn't even go back outside, scared as bad, she said, cause it...
Well, now, let's think, we had a guy buy, uh, burn his wife's Tahoe down there by May.
And it may have blew up.
Well, it went warm and it went whoom.
Yeah.
It shook everybody.
Well, now, that could have been it then. It was this way.
And it's still sitting there?
Yeah, it's still sitting there.
Maybe it was Saturday morning, Friday morning, Saturday morning.
Yeah, it was Friday or Saturday morning, yeah.
Well, that, that, it must have a little gas in it.
Yeah.
It jumped straight up, I said.
Okay. All right, well, I just wondered if y'all knew anything about it.
No, I, I don't know of any new mining that's gonna go, go on around here, other than what the Trappers continue with, or are they still continuing with it, supposedly?
Well, they ran the mayor off.
No, I don't know. Anyway, um, alright, any other questions or comments?
Is the floor open?
Where were we on...
Uh, we're public comments primarily.
Oh, we are in public comments now?
Yeah.
Okay.
After going to the warrior and the Trapper Christmas program, I don't want anybody throwing a rock at me.
I was bringing it up. I was gonna bring it up, if you want me to bring it up.
I have an idea. You can bring it up.
Uh-uh, go ahead.
And we, we've done bad, you know, having to work, and I thought next year we might can have a little fun. And we've never had a Christmas right here, but I think we should have a lawn mower, riding lawn mower parade.
We're gonna put Lewis at the head.
And you can pull a little cart with your lawnmower, and we'll start here, Van, circle up at the store and come back through. And a lawn, I think that would be something really, you know...
Well, now, we have to go all the way down to...
We have to go through Green Acres.
We gotta go to Green Acres.
If we don't have a riding lawnmower, you can push your push mower, and I think that'll be something too.
Lewis said he ain't pushing the lawnmower.
Now, why are we doing the lawnmowers? Why can't we have cars?
I told her golf carts and car...
Well, I just think a lawnmower is, you know... Lawnmowers, it'd be something different.
I mean, Thomas could, if he still has his Chevelle, he could, you know...
Well, we could, but I think the main thing focused there is to be the lawnmowers.
Well, I think the, the, what you call, what we're gonna make her, though?
The grandma?
She could ride, could she ride in the, the pretty Chevelle?
How can my pick up?
See, that would be, that, that would be, that would be a great leader of the...
She gave me that suggestion after she went to the parade.
You get Commissioner Richards in to bring his, uh, motor trim down and put lights on it, put it in there.
We'll have to put Paul's John Deere in there.
When she pro, when she called me and told me that, I said, okay, if we have a parade, you're gonna be the grand marshal. So then she texted me back and she said, well, either that or Santa Claus. So whatever you want, she could be the grand marshal or Santa.
I will not be the ho-ho.
On that subject, I was thinking the other day that we, we need to get some kind of Christmas decorations.
Well...
I agree.
I agree.
I do, I agree, we need to do that.
One point to after Christmas.
But we need to buy something after Christmas, but Alabama Power had sent me a form wanting to know how many lights we had and how, how long would they burn and blah, blah, blah. And I told them over the phone, I said, we don't have any Christmas decorations or lights and we're not doing anything. And I said, so she said, well, that's not good enough, you're gonna have to send the form back and tell me that they, she don't have any.
Well, I just think it would be nice to maybe have a tree out here and some, I mean, we don't have to do all of the light poles, but some.
But we can do some. We can do some of the ones that we still have light on.
We can sell that swing set and buy a lot of them.
Do what?
Sell that swing set and buy a lot of Christmas ones.
Yeah, we could, if we could sell it.
We made a for sale sign on it right now, right before Christmas.
We really do need to, we do need to do that, Mayor, maybe that would be...
They cost that money to buy a Christmas.
Is there anybody, any other town that's gonna do a park or anything?
I don't know, I've been wanting to sell it to Trapper for them to put down their park.
Individual buy that.
Who?
We'll go down there and talk to them.
An individual, just put a price on it.
Who, who is the mayor down there? He's just...
You're not gonna get what they paid for it. I mean, they paid five hundred dollars.
But you can go in Sam's and buy one for half the price.
Oh, they're not gonna pay one.
Hey, you can go to Lowe's and buy one like that for about a thousand dollars.
Yeah, if you get fifteen hundred dollars out of that one, you'd be doing good.
I doubt if you'll get that much.
I doubt it too. Myrtle might be.
Yep, alright.
Myrtle has them.
Yes, ma'am.
They're back there trying to get this wolf to...
They keep talking about seven, the swing set. But, you know, I was here at the meeting where they went, they made a resolution about the park, and they went and had it recorded at the courthouse or something. If we come up and sell that, uh, swing set or whatever, will we face legal action?
Not if you put it on.
No, we're not changing the status of the park.
Larry.
The park is a park, and it's only a park, with or without a swing set.
Oh, okay, well, see, I didn't know, because I remember them telling Bill the night they did that. They said, uh, that resolution and all and park, and they named it and whatever.
What's the name of it?
County Land Park.
Park.
And they told Bill to get up there the next morning and get that registered.
Well, they got Jefferson, they went Jefferson County, cause that's Jefferson County.
Is that Jefferson County?
Just like, uh, just like they did when they registered it, if we chose to disband that park, that's all we have to do, is pass another resolution or ordinance dissolving the park.
Okay, well, see, I didn't know if it, if we could get... And since they're fussing about us not keeping it up, you know?
Well, we'll see if they can... You have to skip the park out.
We'll see if they can do half of the park grass cut next summer.
Alright, that's, uh, that's for discussion.
It'd be easier to carry a grave.
They're diet drinks, but I'm just saying.
I wanna do half of it.
Think I've got one or two here.
I'm gonna do faster.
I don't know if legalities about it or what.
Well, I don't think that there'd be any ground for anybody to bring lawsuits against us for selling a piece of equipment that's not being used.
If nobody is used to that.
I've never seen nobody.
I've seen one, I mean, a couple with some...
Well, would, would y'all be eyeing one of Coer to sell it, or does anybody wanna keep it? I mean, it's just really...
Do you know anybody that would like...
Well, I'll go out and sell it for you if you want it sold, but I just don't wanna be...
Well, how much do you got, so you got much?
Let's keep, let's just think about this for a little bit, and we'll bring it up in a future meeting after everybody's had a chance to think about it, and see what they wanna do.
Show five dollar tickets on, right?
Whatever we do, we need to write it up as a resolution and, uh...
Record it.
Record it. So, let's, uh, let's tangle that for later discussion. And even though it might sell real quick, this time of year, you know, I don't wanna rush into any of that.
I also don't wanna ruffle our feathers until we get this other, this dump resolved.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, uh, that is not the, yes, the dump is number one. Roads in the dump are number one. It's a co, co title there.
Okay, do we have, excuse me, do we have any kind of a motion or anything on purchasing equip, I mean, uh, Christmas stuff for next year? Anybody wanna do, we gotta have to have, we gotta have a...
I second the motion.
You gotta have a motion and you gotta have a committee to do it.
She made it and I second it.
Alright. But now you've got to, somebody's gotta appoint a committee or somebody to do it. To go check prices and purchase and whatever.
They're having after Christmas sales on them.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Look, where do you get the, the...
Fix, you don't let fix play or, you know, a lot of municipal, uh, pander to them in municipalities, but after Christmas, it's gonna be dirt cheap, cause they don't wanna hold it for a year.
Yeah.
You're talking about fixed plays, a place to go?
Yeah, but I mean, there's a lot better than that.
Is it still down on First Avenue or...
I don't, I don't know.
I don't believe fixed place there anymore. I believe it's closed.
It's not there anymore?
I don't know, it may be, but I, I'm down there all the time and I haven't seen it in a long time. Of course, I've been looking for it.
The towns.
Okay, you need to, you want a committee, and the committee can find out or say, do it all that, Mayor.
We have a motion and we have a second.
Okay.
We got the vote on.
Alright. All in favor of forming a committee to buy decorations? Aye. Unanimous? Alright, now who's going to head up the committee?
I want it. Her. You ready right back there?
Lucy.
Lucy.
I want her.
Well, now, you're not the, Cecil, you're not appointing everyone.
I'm, I'm appointing, I'm letting...
I'm, I'm appointing or I'm suggesting.
Okay.
Hey, I'll help anybody.
I think you need to be in charge of it.
I'll get behind you, just like I got behind her with the signs.
And Lucy?
And it'll be your decision.
I think it needs to be her decision.
They have to speak to councils to see.
Yeah, it does. I, I can, I can, I'll be glad to help.
Okay.
And Lucy?
Okay, but the thing about it is, you cannot, you cannot wait too long on that and bring it to the council to spend.
We'll handle it.
Because the, it'll be gone, the merchandise.
We understand that.
Well, let's see, our next meeting is going to be January...
Wait just a minute, I'll get you.
Now, how many other people do you want in there?
I think it needs to be probably three.
Just two of you?
Well, two's enough.
You and, you and that lady right back there.
The second Monday, it'll be the thirteenth of January.
Alright, let's, uh... Well, why don't we, uh...
You could probably go on the seat, you could go that way.
A budget, or an amount, amount to exceed...
Okay, so what do you want it to be?
If they find something usable or suitable, that they, know how much they expect.
I got a question to ask about that.
Okay.
Brenda's got these different groups over here. Now, which one of them will pay for it?
Well, I guess it has to do with the runners.
The money, it has to be the general fund. What would be?
I don't know, it could be capital improvements.
Yeah, capital improvement. I don't have that seventy thousand.
No, but I mean, that's where the decorations would be, basically, but we could do capital improvements.
That's right.
We've got a little bit of money in capital improvements, got, what did I say, three thousand?
I think that, what, a thousand dollars?
We've got twenty four forty one in the capital.
Thousand dollars.
Why don't we start out a little bit lower than that this year and see how it works out?
So what number are you thinking?
I'm taking five hundred.
No. I think we need at least eight hundred. I hate to rain on your parade, but five hundred dollars is gonna buy you a light bulb.
Yeah.
Let me look online and see what I...
See, you're looking at, if you're buying stuff for a municipality that you're gonna put outside, it's got to be, you're interested in quality, uh, or you're wasting your money, you're wasting your time.
Yeah, you want it to last.
So, I mean, you're probably looking at each thing you put on a pole, minimum two hundred fifty bucks a piece.
Yeah, probably. Let me look online and see if I can find them.
But if we go ahead and do a, but if we go ahead and do a budget of a, an amount, that's what they need to do. Can spend that amount before the council hits.
She's got something to say.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I'm, that's what I'm saying, the budget.
I mean, I can get in touch with somebody before the council, uh, uh, we have to...
Yeah, even if you just start out by buying enough to do the lights here near the town hall.
And a tree.
Yeah, that's a very limited schedule.
And some, some kind of a tree on the, to put down, uh, that would be a start. And then it's something you can add to each year.
Okay, that's a good idea.
But buy quality when you buy, so it lasts.
And add to it next time.
Well, I agree.
Yeah, add to it.
Need to get it, uh, so that it will last more than one season.
Right.
Uh, five thousand.
Yeah.
If you put a tree in here and put lamps on it, somebody's gonna borrow it.
Well, they may not, who knows? They've done, they've done pretty good, so.
We could put naked wires on it with a tuck.
We don't want our lawn mower insurance to go off.
It's, it's bad enough right now with nothing.
Alright, we have a figure of a thousand dollars.
I make the motion that we accept.
Well, what are we supposed to be doing?
Well, making a motion to establish a budget of a thousand dollars.
I second it, I second it.
I make a motion that we establish a budget of a thousand dollars for Christmas decorations.
Oh, it's seconded.
Let me ask one question first.
Sure.
The, uh, capital improvement, that can't be used for road funds, right?
No.
That's correct.
So it has to be used for capital improvement?
Yeah, with Miss, with Miss Bick? Yes, ma'am. I mean, decorators.
I understand we wanna use something that we can might use for road funds.
No, that can't be used, that or the general fund.
We gotta do either one, the general fund or the capital improvements.
I will double check the definition of, for the capital improvements fund, to make sure it falls within that, but, uh, I'm, I'm sure it would.
You know what we said earlier?
Hmm, that is.
You know, permission or...
Hmm. So, alright, we have...
For you, Miss, or permission, whatever you wanna do, Mayor.
We have a, a motion, and it's been seconded, all in favor of a thousand dollar budget. Alright.
To start with, okay.
Everybody agree?
That's good.
Alright. Yeah, would you need a little, a little enlightenment here?
Yeah. It wouldn't hurt.
Alright.
I've got a little bit of stuff at my house. I don't have any, I didn't decorate any, I didn't decorate anything at my house, but if anybody wants to help me, I can go through some of it and we can bring it up here and decorate around this town hall.
Okay, alright, um... Anybody else have a question or comments?
Uh, we didn't say anything about the Christmas parade.
Did we ever, did we ever?
Well, we're, uh...
Are we gonna table the parade?
Table the parade? Just, just a question.
It needs to be brought up in the springtime when we get planted, so we can plan for it.
To be talked about in the spring, yeah.
Okay.
Did we ever vote on these two being the chairman for the committee?
No, that's appointed, you don't have to vote.
Okay, alright, I just wanted to know.
Thank you, Floyd.
That's all I wanted to know.
You just want your tees dyed, cars and your eyes dyed, okay?
You done good.
If you wanna do decorations, I would suggest that you begin with a plan first. And not buy a bunch of lights and stuff, but determine what you wanna put up and then go looking for it in particular.
Well, I'm gonna look online and see what they have and then, um, you know.
Yeah, I would probably have any...
I just think the...
These two light bulbs on each side of, uh, town hall.
And a tree, some kind of tree.
Yeah. We'll start small this year, see how it goes.
Uh, just a thought, but I was, I asked her about, uh, maybe we might even plant a fir tree out there, one of those that grows fast, and if we did it this year, then by next December...
We could decorate it.
You know, you wanna buy a reasonable size one already, but, but we planned it.
Get you a little in cypress.
Yeah.
Like so my yard y'all could pull, I got three of them.
Okay.
You know, by this time next year, it would be, uh...
It'll be big.
Alright. Alright. Anybody else, anybody?
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It coming into Green Acres, you know, off of seventy nine, I mean, uh, county line, it's pretty dark. Is there any way we could get a light, put on that light pole to help us see to come in? You know, cause it is a subdivision and I noticed some's at drive ways and, you know...
I thought Van had one on that corner, and they had a wreck, hit it, knocked it down, and I thought he was, his insurance company was gonna replace it, but it never got replaced.
There was one there where the stop sign.
Yeah, I remember the wreck, I remember when they knocked it down.
Remember it knocked it down?
Mm-hmm.
The lady ran over it.
Said when he got his insurance money, he was gonna think, sit, put another one up, and they never did.
He's probably forgotten.
Maybe we need to contact Van about that.
Let's put it across the road.
Well, it would help all of us coming in and out, you know, even if we got a big light.
Across at the fence over there, yeah, at the end of the... That's probably what it needs to be. I don't know, Alabama Powers put one up there. I'll call them.
Let's see.
You could put a set of...
Let's check it and see. If they put one up there, it shouldn't cost more than five eighty dollars or nothing.
Yeah, and the, and the pole is there, so I don't know what it would...
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I'll talk to Mr. Burton.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion. Get the chair.
All right, then, meeting adjourned.